Welcome everyone to City Council Meeting for Monday, September the 12th. If we could have a roll call to establish form, please ma'am.
Mickey Schneider?
Here.
Bob Thomas?
Here.
David Mitchell?
Here.
Kristy Kendrick?
Here.
Terry McClung?
Here.
James DeVito?
Here.
We have six.
All right, we can stand and pledge allegiance, please.
I forgot about this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I forgot.
Get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We got any additions? James?
I'd make a request from the other side of the table to revisit the vote on Damon Henke for CAPC. One of you is able to revisit this vote, being as you abstained or cast a negative vote. There's a number of people here in support of Mr. Henke, and I feel that it needs reconsideration of council. Clarification, I think somebody that abstains isn't considered for reconsideration.
He's asking for that.
The opinion? Okay.
Okay. Does anybody else?
Let's take new business three off, please.
The resolution for Trailhead?
Yes.
Any other items? All right, get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
In favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. Get a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, errors, additions? All those in favor of the minutes as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And we have the other two sets.
Oh, for the minutes to, for the special meeting for August 31st?
Move to approve.
Minutes number one, or meeting number one.
Second.
Okay, any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion for special meeting number two.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any comments? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right, I have a, two things before we get into the commission committee's report. One, I'd like to recognize the Boy Scouts over here, they are working on their civic and government merit badge, I think, and congratulations for y'all being here and being involved and interested in city governance. I hope we don't get too boring for you guys tonight. The second item is I have a proclamation which goes along with, kind of with the civic and government affairs I'd like to read. It's for the U.S. Constitution Week. It says, "Whereas September 17th, 2016 marks the 229th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorial anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitutional Week. Now therefore, I, Robert Butch Berry, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitutional Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideas of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by virginally protecting the freedoms guaranteed us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And witness thereof, I have hereby set my hand and cause the seal of Eureka Springs, Arkansas to be affixed as 12th day of September 2016."
Thank you, Butch.
We've got some vacancies on the various commissions, including the CAPC as noted by James.
Before we do that, could we please do a moment of silence for Patrick?
All right, yes. One of our former members of the City Council, Patrick Brammer, passed away, I think on Friday, if we have just a moment of silence and recognition for his service, it would be good. All right, we do have, like mentioned, we've got the position four of the CAPC vacant. James had mentioned if there's anybody interested on the opposing side wishing to bring up the last vote, now's a good time to do that. If not, we also have a hospital position four that's vacant and cemetery position five which is vacant. We have public comments?
Hello, I'm Damon Henke. I thought I should come and make an introduction and maybe I could give you some information about who I am and what I've done here in town. So I own Ozark Mountain Vacation Rentals. We do about 50 different properties around town, that's the primary business I have. And then also, we converted the Eureka Suites Hotel into apartments to try and have affordable housing here in town, and then I also recently purchased Douglas Inn, which is a bed and breakfast, which is my primary residence. So I've got a lot of different angles in town business-wise, so that really is what got me involved in the government of the town. So I helped with the Main Street organization, better known as ESDN, and then I started with the CAPC. The CAPC, I've been there for two and a half years, and my position, I was filling another position, and the position came or expired, so I put in my application again. My fellow commissioners submitted me to you, and then I believe there was a bit of information and maybe some confusion on my involvement with the chamber. I was truly asked to be the interim director there, which I served from January till May of 2015 to January of this year. Tammy Thoreau took it over, but that was really just to help with visitor services and keep the tourism flow going through town. I enjoyed the stay there, but there was never any involvement in 2223 or really any big government involvement at all. But if anybody has any questions too, I'll be here. I would love for that to be a motion, to make a motion for reconsideration for anybody who abstained and voted no, who might have had a question or would like to reconsider the vote based on my information that I'm providing to you. So certainly, I appreciate your time and thank you for serving the community.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, I'm not known for being short, so I'll be quick as I can. I'm Paul Arnold. I've been, my wife and I have been tenants of Damon's since shortly after he bought Eureka Suites. He lived there in the apartment complex slash apartments for the first couple of years that we were there, and I got to see him both as a neighbor as well as a landlord. I've sent each of you, and I apologize to our mayor, I didn't know you were going to be part of the meeting, so I didn't copy you this, but I sent an email to each of you that details a lot more than I can say in the three minutes here, and a lot more than the papers will allow me to say in 200 words or less. But, to say the least, when I saw the papers, the articles about Mike Bishop being fired and different people retiring and all the comments back and forth, I didn't know anything about it. And I went, I knew Damon was active in the community, I asked him what his thoughts were on it, and one of the things that I'd read was that somehow it's going to hurt businesses in town. I am a born-again fundamentalist evangelical Christian, so he certainly had no incentive to tell me anything other than it's wrong and don't do it and oppose it and so on and so forth. He didn't. I asked him what his thoughts were, and he said basically what I wrote to you guys, that the city was divided on whether or not it would hurt their business. He thought, from his perspective, it didn't matter whether it would or wouldn't, he didn't think it would affect his business one way or the other, but that it didn't matter even if it would, because you just can't discriminate, you know, it doesn't matter. I've detailed quite a bit in there about the number of proofs that he certainly is not greedy. He's about, I've rented my entire life, and I'm 65 now, so I've been renting for 40-some years from all houses, duplexes, apartments, California, Tennessee, and here, in two different cities here in Arkansas. And I've had a lot of landlords, and Damon's probably hands down the fairest, the most compassionate, and the least greedy landlord I've ever had. He doesn't charge for a lot of things that he could easily charge for, and I've certainly had plenty of landlords, including one in town, who would have charged and did charge for a whole bunch of these things. Those are not the actions of somebody who's greedy, and I think I'm getting the signal. I hope you all got the email. If you didn't, I'll be happy to send one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No, sorry.
Okay. All right, that's the end of the public comments. Get a motion for discussion of the 2013-2014 legislative audit?
So moved.
Second.
All right. I think you guys, last year, we had somehow did not get the 2013 audit discussion on there, and so that's the reason we're putting both of them on there this year. I don't know what happened, but I guess, anyway, it slipped through. So I don't know whether you all had a chance to review them or not, but we should, this is one of the things where the council is supposed to do, is make a note that they have received them and reviewed them, so. Yes, sir?
Is, I can't, I did, but I just don't remember what they say right now. I'm assuming Lonnie got any recommendations and already is correcting them?
Right, I think we had, looked like, and I don't remember exactly, seemed like we still have one or two about segregation of duties on there.
Still working on it, okay.
That we're doing. That seems to be a constant thing from the last several years.
So when we have the workshop or something, maybe next time we do the budget stuff, could he just tell us what he fixed on it, or is that, is it not in the workshop?
He's outside right now, we didn't have discussed that.
If you want.
Yeah. Did you pick up on the question?
I did.
Okay.
The segregation of duties, that will always be on there because we can't afford the higher enough people, and what we've done in response to that is we've tried to rearrange duties and put in place checkpoints and where people are reviewing other people's work and everything, of course, that goes out of the bank accounts has two signatures, and so I don't know what more we can do, and I have discussed it with the auditors. It's a common problem with small cities or small organizations of any type.
I don't remember the list of things that were on there, that was my problem, and I do remember that one from before. Was there anything else that you're correcting?
Actually, if I'm remembering correctly, both audits were really clean, there were a few minor things, and we've taken care of all of those that we could.
Okay.
And, of course, the auditor for, is just now finishing, we haven't had the exit interview yet, but, and there's nothing in 15 that has come up at this point. And so, and they go back and review the previous year to make sure that we have at least addressed them.
Okay.
And the segregation of duties has been there, and it will continue to be there, and we have discussed that with them, and we just don't have the funds to hire, and even if we could, we don't have a place to put them, so.
Any other questions? Do we need just a motion to, what's the?
Just a, I think you need to do them separately and have a motion to approve and do 13 and 14.
Motion to approve and accept the auditor's report for 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion?
I'm moved to approve the legislative audits from 2014.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. Thank you all on that. And as Lonnie said, we're just now going through our 2015, and probably going to have our exit interviews sometime in the next month, from what I'm understanding on that. Everything still looks good with that, so. Our next item is a motion to discuss the 2016 mid-year budget adjustment.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Lonnie, you want to?
I assume everyone has a copy in your packet. Essentially, these are the items that we discussed in the workshop I had upstairs in the courtroom, and so just run through them very briefly. The police department wanted to switch $2,500 between funds, so we did that. On the professional services, that has all in the past been charged to the mayor's budget, we went back through and reclassified the amount of the city attorney's fees that are dealing with the district court and reclassified those to the district, professional fees with the district court, where they should properly be, and added an amount to that to carry us through the end of the year. Of course, that's a, that's an estimate. And in the 14 account, which is the fire department, the fire chief wanted to make some reallocations, and so he requested $30,000 be taken out of office supplies and operating and allocated to those other accounts. And then, so we did that. We had a person who wanted to go on the retirement plan, which is a 457B plan, and it's a matching, and so we made the adjustments there on the retirement. The next page in general capital, council approved a loan for various fire and emergency equipment of $106,600. That, actually, that money came in today, and then we've got federal grant revenues coming, two grants of $88,000. And then on those expenses, the federal grant expenses are the items that we will be spending out of, out of those grants, and then also with the fire and EMS equipment of $7,6250, we included in there the equipment loan payment and the interest expense. Then down in transit, we're making the adjustment for the additional trolley that was carried over from 15, didn't get paid, and the additional payment on the tram that was purchased. And that's it. And when you, when this is approved, we will put them, actually enter them in the budget, but we can't do that until they're approved by council.
Mr. McLeod?
I'd like to make a motion that we assign the mid-year budget resolution a number and read it for passage.
Second.
Any questions? Do we need roll call?
Yes. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Six zero. The resolution number will be 689. A resolution amending the adopted 2016 budgets for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, as a result of the mid-year budget review process. Whereas the City Council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has made a comprehensive study and review of the current budget, and whereas, in the opinion of the City Council, the 2016 fiscal budget should be amended to reflect the following changes in both revenue and expenditure budgetary amounts as set forth thereafter. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section one, this resolution shall be known as the 2016 mid-year budget resolution for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for the 12-month period beginning January 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2016, and the attached documents present revisions to estimates for revenues and expenditures for the period. All revenues and appropriations are based on estimated revenues, and all estimates are subject to change during the budgetary period. Section two, the amounts for revenues and expenditures proposed in this 2016 mid-year amended budget are hereby authorized and appropriated for the purposes set forth the calendar year ending December 31, 2016. The amendments are as follows. From the general fund, all of these are O1s, 125512, maintenance and equipment in the police decreased $2,500. Line item 125572, professional services other increase $2,500. 105571, professional services legal decrease $40,500. Line 135571, professional services legal increase $40,500. From the fire department, 145005, salaries and wages overtime increase $10,000. Also the fire department, 145301, supplies, office, and operating decrease $30,000. 145303, medical supplies increase $6,000. 5513, maintenance and operation for vehicles increase $4,000. Fire department, 145515, fuel and oil increase $4,000. Telephone increase $1,000. Again, fire 5572, professional services other increase $5,000. In 155010, a retirement contribution increase of $1,227. In general capital revenue, 1200, $4,500 loan proceeds an increase of $106,600. And in 12004993, a federal grant revenue increase of $88,000. On the expense side, in 12005836, federal grant increase of $119,254. Also on the expense side, 12145800, capital expense from fire and EMS, an increase of For 12145807, principal expense from an equipment loan, an increase of $5,032. 12145826, fire interest expense from an equipment loan, an increase of $630. And the transit department, on the revenue side, 85004040, the beginning fund balance will have an increase of $118,355. And on the expense side, 85035800, capital expenses, an increase of $81,285. And 85045800, capital expenditures, an increase of $183,331.
Thank you. Our next item on new business is number four.
Excuse me, there.
Oops, yes, sir.
Can I say something else?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McClung? In the general fund, we have added all of the captions by department out beside the numbers. That'll be on your next budget report.
Thanks, Lonnie, appreciate it.
Nothing like making Mr. McClung smile.
I appreciate it.
All right, new business number four, get a motion to, for a resolution to waive bidding on playground equip, playground project at Lake Leatherwood.
Most to discuss.
Second.
Second. I think Justin should be here somewhere.
We changed it to an ordinance because we found that.
It was an ordinance.
Yes.
All right.
All the waiving has been done by ordinance. Are we cool enough now?
Okay. Is that true? Okay. There we go. Ordnance waiving, competitive bidding for construction of new playground equipment in the Lake Leatherwood City Park. Basically, I think, and Justin can explain this a little bit better too, the state has a group that they buy playground equipment for, it's kind of like the police department can buy their cars from, from the state, and they have a large group where they can go in and pick and select, and same thing with playground equipment, the state has a manufacturer.
It's called cooperative contracts, or what they're called. The DFNA, the Department of Finance Administration negotiates with vendors for large-scale items that government entities buy across the state, so that we can, a project like this, you can have the input onto it and not have to go through the full bid process and allow you to get something more, more to your, more customized, so. And what, the way this progressed was originally this grant was for the pavilion in the playground out of Leatherwood. The pavilion's since been taken off, so staying within the original guidelines, we were trying to do the bid, but we've been talking with purchasing up there, this is the easier way to do it, the way they prefer to do it, the state prefers, because they've already negotiated with them, so. Yes, sir?
Well, Justin, so it's a, it's a 50-50 grant?
Correct.
Is that, is that going to strap the parks?
No, that's already budgeted, that was in this year's budget.
Oh, it is, okay.
It is, it's our, the Leatherwood capital funding is our 50% to come out of that.
So this has been?
This is, this is actually a grant from 2015 that we got, right when I came on with the pavilion, weren't going to be able to get the pavilion, they thought, for the price we could afford, so that was taken off, slid it back to the playground, and then so it became a little bit of a different process, which is why we've kind of ended up here a little bit eleventh hour where we need to.
Well, yeah, that was my, I was, my concern, because of why we're, how we ended up at 11th hour and have to do the emergency clause and.
Right, and I do regret that, not one I would prefer to do. Like I said, we were trying, within the original setup of the grant, we were trying to do what was called a request for proposal, which is a bid, but you're kind of giving them some free rein, and that just was challenging to, to get. free rein, and that just was challenging to, to get them to approve what we could say, what we wanted, what we didn't, so again, if this had been going straight through as a playground grant from the beginning, this would have been put to our plate and we would have known about that, that would have come in, so.
My biggest concern is.
Absolutely, that's, that's.
My biggest concern is the fifty-fifty part, and the parks is comfortable with that, it's in their budget, so.
And y'all may remember when we were going to do the pavilion, and it came in over budget, so they basically backed off and decided to go with the whole playground instead.
And that was something right when I started in March, one of the first things I did was to write the letter to, and the mayor helped that to alter the project, to keep the grant, and really going to get something special out there at Leatherwood from it, it's going to be quite the playground, so, it can be quite an addition to the town.
James?
I'll move to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, sing five, saying aye. Any opposed?
The ordinance number will be two-two-four-seven, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for construction of new playground equipment in the Lake Leatherwood City Park. Whereas the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, the city, is currently in need of a new playground in the Lake Leatherwood City Park, and whereas the city of Eureka Springs has been awarded a grant from the Department of Parks and Tourism to assist with construction of the playground, and whereas the state purchasing guidelines provide for use of cooperative contracts negotiated with vendors approved by the Arkansas State Department of Finance and Administration as a preferred method of vendor selection for this project, and whereas the Parks and Recreation Director and Parks Commission have researched the cost and availability of various manufacturers and suppliers for playground equipment, and whereas Kyle Recreation approves state vendor for Little Tikes commercial playground equipment has materials and capabilities that meet and exceed expectations and costs, and whereas this method will allow for more planning input and a more customized result than a standard bid process. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the City Council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section one, the requirements for competitive bidding for the new playground at a cost of approximately one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, which includes the cost of the site prep, service installation, equipment installation, and other components shall hereby be waived. Section two, the Parks and Recreation Commission for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, shall fund this project with fifty percent Leatherwood Capital Improvement Funds and fifty percent Arkansas Department of Parks and Tourism matching grant money. Section three, all ordinances and resolutions and parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. In the event any one or more of the provisions contained in this ordinance shall for any reason be held by a court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid, illegal, or unenforceable in any respect. Such invalidity, illegality, or unenforceability shall not affect the remaining provisions of this ordinance, and this ordinance shall be construed as if such invalid, illegal, or unenforceable provision or provisions had never been contained herein.
James?
Move to approve ordinance number two-two-four-seven on its first reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, sing five, saying aye. Any opposed? So moved.
Move to suspend rules and place ordinance number two-two-four-seven on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yeah.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Six zero. Ordinance number two-two-four-seven, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for construction of new playground equipment in the Lake Leatherwood City Park.
Mr. DeVito?
Move to suspend rules and place ordinance number two-two.
No.
I'm sorry. Move to approve ordinance number two-two-four-seven on its second reading.
Second.
Any discussion?
I was trying to read along.
All those in favor, sing five, saying aye. Any opposed? So moved.
Let me try it this time. Move to suspend rules and place ordinance number two-two-four-seven on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. McLean?
Yeah.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Six zero. Ordinance number two-two-four-seven, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for construction of new playground equipment in the Lake Leatherwood City Park.
Mr. DeVito? To approve ordinance two-two-four-seven on its third reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. We'll have roll call on that.
Right.
Yes.
Ms. McLean?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Six zero.
I move to invoke the emergency clause.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yeah.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Six zero. Emergency clause, section four, as the need to install the playground is immediate due to a construction deadline of December thirty-one, twenty sixteen, with a preferred completion date of November one, twenty sixteen, to guarantee grant funding and otherwise for the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of Eureka Springs, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall take full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
All right. You're good to go on that.
Thank you, Matt.
All right. Thank you. All right, our next item is item number five, discussion of rescinding ordinance number sixteen twenty-eight, land under the jurisdiction of the parks.
I so move.
Second.
All right. Ms. Kendrick, you want to lead off?
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am. PowerPoint. Here. Thank you.
Yes, the press wants to talk.
Do you mind adjusting?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, oh, good, good, and that's the next person I was calling for.
Thank you.
Okay. I would like to discuss the parks jurisdiction over undeveloped streets. Historically, in eighteen eighty-four, the U.S. government granted U.S. patents of some property now in the city to the mayor of Eureka Springs. There was subsequent litigation, and the streets and alleys in a forty-acre area located at the north end of East Mountain were confirmed to be owned by the city in the townsite compromise. The area within which the streets and alleys that are owned by the city is less than one half of the city, and the next page will show you a map, and all of that area that's in yellow is the area where the U.S. government granted property to the city of Eureka Springs, and the little orange area is the townsite compromise area. All of that, in that, those areas, the city owns the streets, but in the remainder of the city, the city does not own the streets. And by the way, there, I think there is some confusion because people talk about the three hundred and twenty acres that are owned by the city, and that's the, you see these big sections, the three hundred and twenty acres is the north area, that's, you've got the eight quarter-quarter sections up here on the north side of this section, that's the three twenty acres. I actually think the city owns more than that, but I, when the streets are not owned by the city, the city only has an easement over those streets, for street purposes only. And where the street, the city does not own those streets, the city has only an easement and the, the underlying ground is owned by adjoining landowners. That property can only be used for street purposes, and the city cannot sell or exchange that property, and they can't divert it for other uses. In the green zone parks ordinance, which is ordinance number sixteen twenty-eight amended, all unopened streets and alleys in the city were given over to the jurisdiction of the Parks and Recs Commission as green zone parks, and I personally do not think that the city could divert the streets for that purpose, for green spaces. And I wonder whether, in fact, we vacated those streets by doing so, but I'm not going to go there. I think the city can, but hasn't, dedicated those unopened streets for trails that we have opened and which we intend to open because those are street purposes, they're pedestrian traffic purposes. So what I would recommend, first of all, is that we rescind the green zone parks ordinance and replace it with another ordinance that gives the parks jurisdiction over the existing and planned trails. Now, I'd like also to move on and discuss the vacation of streets. The city code provides that if somebody wants to vacate a street or alley, they have to follow the provisions of a particular statute and pay a two-hundred-dollar application fee, which is returned to the applicant if the request is denied. I think that the attorney's fees alone that the city incurs must exceed the cost of the application fee. The city attorney and must prepare two ordinances and a deed, and is generally involved in survey issues concerning the vacation. State law has two provisions under which the city can vacate streets, and though the city code requires us to follow the more complicated provision, there's a much simpler way of vacating streets. The next page talks about the two ways of vacating streets. One allows the city to vacate such portions thereof as may not, for the time being, be required for corporate purposes, that doesn't really require much bureaucracy at all. The other provision, which is referred to in the city code, requires that the street can't have been used by the public as a street or alley for five years. The owner files a petition along with a plat, a date for hearing is set, notices given once a week for two weeks in the newspaper, written consent of all the owners butting the streets that are, are to be vacated must be filed with the council, and the ordinance is conclusive unless suit is brought within thirty days after passage of the ordinance. The current procedure for vacating streets requires additional steps. It requires the written consent from Public Works, it requires a public hearing by the Parks and Recs Commission, it requires a public hearing by the Planning Commission, all of that is reported even gets to council. Then it requires an additional ordinance retaking the possession of the street or alley from parks, and in the meantime, Parks and Recs becomes embroiled in the law of street vacations and real estate legal descriptions and surveys, and often gets in the middle of boundary disputes among neighbors. What is not required in the current process, some of which I think would be very wise, is that the owner is not required to submit surveyed plaques and legal descriptions drawn by a land surveyor. I think quite often what would get in here are hand-drawn plaques by the owners, and I think this ends up just in a lot of wasted time on the part of the city attorney, the mayor's office, and the city clerk. Also, building and safety, fire, police, and the historic district commission are not Parks has requested a thirty-day moratorium so that they can once again review the procedures for vacation. Parks has had jurisdiction of the unopened streets since nineteen ninety-four, and the procedures have only created immeasurable red tape for both citizens and city employees. I think that the city is losing money on vacations. The two-hundred-dollar application fee does not cover our actual out-of-pocket costs, not to mention the time on the part of city employees, and I don't think the city is always insisting on compensation for the land that it does own. And I think that the procedures are overly burdensome without adequately protecting city interests and resulting in real estate transactions involving city citizens being held up for months. Moving on to the land bank committee. By ordinance twenty-one ninety-five approved in January twenty fifteen, a land bank committee was formed to identify property owned by the city that could be sold and other property that the city should acquire. The land bank committee was to retain the proceeds of those sales for the purpose of acquiring other property. I think that the land bank committee is unwieldy, it has both the director parks and the parks commissioner and alderman, the director of Public Works, the director of finance, and two at-large members. The land bank committee, as far as I understand, is defunct. I would recommend that we rescind ordinance twenty-one ninety-five, creating the land bank committee, I think the committee is unwieldy, I think the city needs all possible sources of income, not, not to have it be dedicated only to buying other land. We have either the, we're in desperate need of money, and we could certainly use it for other purposes, and there are certainly other capital expenditures that the city could put this money towards, the Black Bass Lake Dam, our water and sewer infrastructure, lots of things, that perhaps maybe we should put that money towards. I also suggest that we rewrite ordinance twenty-two oh three concerning the vacation of streets and alleys to allow the city to use all the tools available under state law to vacate the streets, and to, that we also require a sizable, non-refundable application that would repay the city all of its attorney's fees and other costs. I think we should be requiring citizens to produce land surveyor-produced plaques and legal descriptions showing specifically the meets and bounds of the area to be vacated, and I think the vacation ought to be handled by the mayor's office, and certainly the mayor could enlist volunteer real estate agents, title company employees, or attorneys to help. I think that all applications should be reviewed by Public Works, Building and Safety, Fire, and Police Departments, but there should only be one public hearing. State law says it should be before the city council. There is no reason why the Parks Commission and Planning ought to have public hearings as well, and they, Parks and Planning should not become embroiled in disputes between neighbors. As far as the commissions go, I think that only applications that concern existing or planned trails should be reviewed by the Parks and Recs Commission, that only applications concerning streets owned by the city should be reviewed by the Planning and Historic District Commission, and that the reviews by all the commissions should be streamlined, there shouldn't be public hearings. All of the commissions have long-term plans, so there's, should be no reason why the commissions themselves ought to meet, their staff ought to be able to look at. Their staff ought to be able to look at their long-term plans and see if the proposed vacation is consistent with their long-term plans. The application fee for vacation should cover the city costs. The streets that are owned by the city should be sold for a good price, and the profits from the sale of streets and alleys should be payable into the city's general fund or committed to any capital improvements by the city, not just the purchase of other real estate. I think that, and I've thought this ever since I moved into the city as a real estate attorney, that the undeveloped streets and alleys within the city create havoc with the titles to privately own properties within the city. Encroachments onto the streets and alleys make properties unmarketable, and the insecurity of not owning property next to your house means that you don't want to improve your houses or your homes surrounding drives and gardens. I think vacations of streets and alleys within the city should be encouraged to produce a revenue stream for the city, result in properties that are land-surveyed, and result in secure private real estate titles. I know some people are concerned about green space, but I think we can easily protect the green space within our city through setback requirements, our tree removal permits, and other planning measures. The green spaces cannot be protected in areas where the city does not own the streets by dedicating the streets to green space uses. I think that's a de facto vacation of the streets.
John?
Well, Kristi, it's obvious you put a lot of work and thought into this, and I'm very thankful for your concise and attention to detail. I'd rather have time to digest this than to get into a lengthy discussion tonight. It really wasn't on our agenda. I think it appeared tonight.
No, no.
Did you put it on the agenda last night?
No, it's on discussion. We didn't have anything to read.
Yeah. I understand that.
No, I didn't. Obviously, I didn't.
We've been presented with a lot of information here. I'd like to take time to digest it rather than getting involved in an uneducated discussion on my part. I'd like to do a little research on this, so having said that.
Before you go, and let me suggest this before you make motion to table it for another meeting, is there any questions that we have, anybody has regarding the presentation that Kristi can address tonight that might go toward the future? I don't want to get into discussions of pros and cons, just strictly questions.
Be prepared.
David?
No.
David?
No, Kristi, I just wanted to tell you I think that you did an excellent job, and I look forward to reviewing it and going through it, and I appreciate the time and effort.
Okay. Terry?
I do too. This is great, because I've been a proponent of this ever since it was put in place, because I never agreed with it and always thought the city should be in control. And there's some things in here that I may not agree with you on, but I guess we can take that under discussion, but it's, I think, great.
I think it's probably pretty much the way it's going to be, a lot of pro and con, same goal.
Excellent.
Thank you.
So when the Chester Arthur deed-ing of the 320, going back to your map.
Mm-hmm.
They talked about half a section and a section. Of course, we know that's not 320 acres, but when we look at this section map.
320 acres.
Yeah.
Well, a section is 640.
Right.
So if we look at the map that you provided, is it the top half a section?
Yes. The 320 acres, there were several U.S. patent, well, at least four U.S. patents, different, they're deeds, deeds from the United States government that were given to the city. And one of them was the 320 acres, which is the north half of Section 15. But there were others as well, even property that was outside of the city, which is the part to the right. And the orange part, by the way, is the townside compromise, which took the actual property away from the city and gave, but did give the streets back to the city.
Is it possible that the research that supports the building of this map can be provided so we can follow the historical?
I have not had time. I was going to give you that information anyway. But I actually have it here. It's in.
I just meant in general, I don't really mean right this minute.
It's right here. These are the U.S. patents back here. I've got copies of those, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Well, Kristi, you did an excellent job. Thank you for your presentation.
Thanks.
All right. Any further questions?
So you want a motion to table? Is that what we're going for?
Yeah.
Next meeting.
Yeah, I bet it's on the agenda for the next meeting, definitely.
Okay. You got a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of tailing this to the next meeting, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Excellent job. Let's see. Actually, I guess number six is our discussion of moratorium on vacating green space.
Does that move?
Second.
All right. James, you want to?
I'll yield to Ms. Snyder on this one.
Oh, I'm yielding to him. This was his.
No, this was Mr. Vito, Ms. Snyder.
Which one are we looking at?
I'll make a motion to blow it off. I mean, it's really, right now, it really doesn't have any relevance.
All right. We got a motion.
Second.
All right, we got a second, motion and a second.
But what is the mention?
To remove, remove this item from the agenda.
I think the Parks Director was wanting to.
Is that what you're saying, remove it?
Yeah.
Well, that's not what he said. That's what he meant.
Well, I like to say which states.
The subjects being discussed, that was the ultimate goal.
David?
Based on what we were just talking about.
Oh, that. Based on Kristi's discussion, it would be better to do this, let have that discussion, and I'm sure, first.
Right, okay. Everybody understand we're going to take this off the agenda? Motion and second been made. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, so moved.
I'm looking at the last one.
All right. Item number seven, discussion of CAPC auditorium.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, sir. You know, I've been sitting on city council now for two terms, and I guess I'm lucky enough or unfortunate enough to be coming up for the third one. And in all that time, I think one of, to me, one of the most important things that city council want of, has had the opportunity to do, is to take the bull by the horns and take a look at the infrastructure and some stuff going on in the city, to honestly take a look at our finances and what we need to do. And we came up with a 1% tax that is going to be voted on by the citizens here on November the 18th. But I have never had as much citizen input as I've ever had on any topic up to this point. It's been remarkable from property owners and business people, et cetera. And to me, it's like this 900-pound gorilla that's running around in the city limits, and nobody really seems to be vocalizing it or bringing it up for a discussion. And that's what I want to do tonight, is briefly discuss the CAPC and auditorium in relation to that 1% tax. The citizens basically have given me the feedback that they understand the 75% infrastructure. They absolutely wish it was even 100%, but they understood the 75. They understood the 10-year plan. I don't think anybody has seen that packet that's been put together by Kim and the mayor and everything, the marketing. I think we got copies of it, but I don't know how public that is yet. But I think that's really going to also help a lot. The 25% to the auditorium, people understand it. They understand the history of the auditorium. I mean, it was built back 1929. They've got that, and they understand the history of it. They understand the importance to the city and to a lot of the citizens that have been here for most of their life and what the auditorium means to them. And when I asked them about the auditorium, it wasn't so much that they were directing their concern to the auditorium as they were expressing their concern about the CAPC's lack of involvement with the auditorium historically to this point. And I want to hit a few highlights of that so that we all can be on the same page here. Basically, the 1948, 1929, the auditorium came to be. 1948, the city created an auditorium commission. By the way, over the years, the city has had three auditorium commissions: 1948, 1972, and 1989. The last one was by Ordinance Number 1343. Back in '51, the city, after the auditorium commission, had defaulted on the loans and everything. They levied a .5 mil tax. Then in '52, they did another 5 mil tax. And then along comes May the 4th, 1972, where the CAPC was created by Ordinance Number 936. It contained a couple of clauses. "All revenues so collected shall be used exclusively for the development of tourist facilities in the city of Eureka Springs and for advertising and promotion." Note, tourist facilities came before advertising and promotion. The commission there, here under-appointed, shall have the exclusive authority to utilize all revenues collected in the fund for the development of tourist facilities, advertising and promotion of the city of Eureka Springs. "The advertising and promotion of the city of Eureka Springs may be defined by the commission to mean any activity connected with tourism with special emphasis to the development of convention and parking facilities." For a long time, the auditorium was considered the convention. They came up with a new auditorium commission again in '72. The first time the city tied the CAPC and the auditorium together was in Ordinance Number 988 on November the 15th, 1975, and they referred to the place as the Auditorium and Convention Center. The AMP tax was doubled in 1977. So in all these years, despite the doubling of the taxation, the auditorium ended up with emergency repairs necessary to bring the electrical system and the public restrooms up to date. In December the 21st, 1980, the city adopted Ordinance Number 1086, which transferred control of the city auditorium from the mayor and city council to the CAPC, which shall have the authority and responsibility for the management, maintenance, and operation of the city auditorium and convention center. There is nothing in the records anywhere that says that Ordinance Number 1086 was ever rescinded. I still have the floor, please, sir. Thank you. Adopted in '89, another auditorium commission comes along. December 21st, '79, Ordinance Number 1086, transferred the auditorium from the city to the CAPC. There is no record showing it was rescinded by the city and that it's still in effect. So my question to that is, why did we even have a lease with them in the first place if we never rescinded the transferring of the auditorium to the CAPC? You look at the Arkansas Code, state code, and you can see where any city of the first class that may levy and does levy a tax pursuant to this subchapter may use or pledge all or any part of the revenue derived from the tax for the purpose of prescribing this subchapter for the operation of tourist-oriented facilities. Chapter 2.56, Advertising and Promotion Convention. "All revenues credited to the Advertising and Promotion Fund pursuant to this article shall be used for advertising and promoting the city and its environs and/or for the construction, reconstruction, extension, equipment improvement, maintenance, repair, and operation of a convention center in the city and its facilities." Surprisingly, in that same municipal code under number C, the city council, which I find interesting, "The city council may by ordinance pledge all or any part of the revenue from the tax levied pursuant to this article to the payment of principal of or interest on the bonds issued by the city under the authority of any other law for the purpose of providing all or part of the funds for the acquisition, construction, reconstruction, extension, equipment improvement, maintenance, or operation of any facility, including without limitations, auditoriums, or parking facilities." I'm surprised that the city council can by ordinance pledge money. So my concern is we have a very convoluted, longstanding history in this town of ordinances, resolutions, back and forth, commissions, three times. And I think somebody talks about, you know, after certain things fail over a period of time, you kind of wonder why you keep repeating the same mistake and expecting success after you've tried it three times. Is the next one going to be a success? And that's what I'm hearing from the citizens. That's what I'm hearing from the business owners in relation to the CAPC and the auditorium as it relates to the 1% tax. It's not that they don't understand that the auditorium needs a revenue stream, but the question is, the auditorium should have always had a revenue stream. It was always identified for the CAPC, and it was always supposed to be used, and it isn't. So here's what's coming up now, is, oh, let's just put on another tax, stick it to the citizens. CAPC goes off down the Yellow Brick Road or whatever for advertising, and they're ignoring the auditorium again. And it's not settling well with the citizens. And I am concerned at this point that it may affect the vote of the tax, which in essence to me is one of the most important things that we've ever done, in essence, to really try and fix the infrastructure, reduce expenses for the city. And I would hate to see that tax potentially fail because of that. Therefore, I would like to challenge our two representatives on the CAPC sitting at this table, that when you meet on September the 14th at that meeting, that you clarify in writing the CAPC's commitment to the auditorium in relation to management, maintenance, operation, and fiscal responsibility for the full 10 years of the proposed 1% tax, and that written accountability would be presented to council at its next meeting to be put into legal standing so that it would stand up for the next 10 years showing that the CAPC is standing behind their obligation to the auditorium.
James?
I don't have any problem with that. You left out one large point. There were two CAPCs. There was a CAPC prior to 2007, and then there is a CAPC post-2007. Those are two separate entities. In 2007, we adopted a different law governing the CAPC. Prior to 2007, there was a law built specifically for the city of Eureka Springs, which was a convoluted tacking together of lodging, retail, and restaurants. And there were mayors who had agendas, there were mayors who transferred authority of the auditorium back to the city, who took it away from the CAPC. But that's the past, and we're concerned about the future. So a lot of what you've discussed as far as revenue streams and all of those other things were part and parcel of a CAPC prior to 2007. Since then, it has been streamlined. We adopt the CAPC ordinance, which every other city that has a CAPC in the state of Arkansas functions under. Prior to that, we were the only city in the state of Arkansas that functioned under that particular CAPC law. I'll take your recommendation to the city, to the CAPC in our next meeting, and that's a good point, to try and draft a 10-year plan. But understand one thing, and I was here when we did have an auditorium commission, and the auditorium functioned as well as it ever functioned with an auditorium commission, just as all of our other commissions, this gentleman over here representing Parks, it functions because it's a commission. The Planning Commission, the Cemetery Commission, well, I'll leave the Hospital Commission out of that one. But there's a reason for those, and I can tell you that it functioned quite well. If there were problems in the past, we should dissolve this city council. If there were problems in the past, we should dissolve this city council. Because we have a history here at this table. And based on our history, we shouldn't meet at our next meeting. But we will, and the CAPC will too. And hopefully with continuity, and that's one of the major obstacles we face in this community, is continuity. We have not had a two-term mayor for 60 years. I've served on this council longer than anybody in this city, and that's only 10 years. So if we get people that are willing to commit to the city, year after year, term after term, continuity and continuity of thought is an important thing, because the way it is, it's the Eureka zigzag. We go left, we go right, we expend a lot of energy for very little forward motion. So just because something happened in the past does not dictate it to be the future. So let's leave the past where it should be.
David?
The past is always good to look back so you don't repeat it, because if you keep repeating it, then you're never going to progress and make change. Continuity is great. There's nothing wrong with it. But at the same time, when the citizens come up and they have this history behind them, and they're saying, "Look at what's gone on all up to this point, for this time, and nothing's ever been done, and here we're going to do another commission, and you're sticking a tax on it." And we look back, and we look at the auditorium, we look at the repairs it needs, we look at no business in it, we look at all of that stuff going on. We like the auditorium, and we want it, but there isn't a good history up to this point of the CAPC and their involvement with the auditorium, and yet there is concern out there that instead, we're moving over, putting a tax on it, a revenue stream, sticking it with the commission, and is anything really going to change? And the only way you can show that there's really change is actually to effectively handle, set up a plan, take accountability and responsibility, and show the citizens of this town that this council and this CAPC means business, and we're going to take care of the money that we're asking you to give us, and we're going to do a good job with it, including the auditorium. And we need to guarantee the citizens of this town that we're not going to screw around with that money and waste it.
James?
Unfortunately, what's occurred in the last 20 years in the community is the disappearance of the volunteer spirit in this community. It's affected us greatly. When I first got here, most of our festivals were run by volunteers. There was very little input from the CAPC. We had some great festivals. I see it dropping by the wayside, and that's an unfortunate fact. CAPC has a very small staff. They can't be expected to do all aspects of the city, and that's why we're requesting that an auditorium commission be formed. It's the only logical way to proceed with the auditorium. With all due respects to Mr. Mitchell, a handful of a dozen people in this community can sway public opinion one way or the other. If I get a couple 300 people talking to me about an item, I realize I'm in the wrong community, because that's not the way this community functions, unfortunately. So with all due respects, I know how the system operates, and I know how a certain group will have their own little farm bank and can move and sway things quite rapidly. I'll just leave it at here. It's a good suggestion. I'll take it to the CAPC at their next meeting. We've got plenty of time between now and November to develop a plan. We can flesh out some of the bullet points that we want. I can only tell you that it's been recently that the CAPC's been encumbered with the auditorium. That's not been the way it's been for most of the time I've been in this community. It's only been within the last few years that the CAP's taken over the operation of the auditorium, and it's, quite frankly, saved the auditorium.
All right, one more time.
One more time. It's more than a handful of people, and don't discount it, thinking it's a few naysayers in town. It's more than that. You may have been here a long time, and I understand that, and also, I never did say that there was a problem with volunteerism or people in this community. That's you putting something on it to distract from the point. I'm talking about the issue.
That wasn't my point.
I'm very clearly asking. I also didn't allow it until November the 18th. I said very clearly that it would be advisable to have something to the next city council meeting, which is at the end of this month, from the CAPC, from your meeting on September 14th, so that it could be used as part of the marketing of this tax to the voters of this city, so that they can see that the CAPC is stepping up to the plate, very clearly and distinctly identifying what it is they can do, what they should do, what they can do, and how long they'll do it for, which is the full 10 years that this tax is until it's sundown. And I think that would go a long way with the citizens here, and hopefully, secure even better that 1 percent tax that this city needs. Finished.
Mitch McClung?
The whole purpose of the commission is, not that the CAPC won't be involved, you know, the CAPC will be involved in advertising and such as that, but as far as administrative and operation of the CAPC under that commission is the right way to go, because, as James put it, the CAPC staff is taxed now. It truly is. The commissioners are just that. They oversee, the director runs the show, basically, of the CAPC. And then we just monitor that and approve the budget and such as that. We're not operators of the CAPC as far as operating, and I'm not really sure what it is people expect the auditorium to be. But it needs to be, to be functionally effective. It needs some kind of organization to be on top of it at all times. And it needs a revenue stream to be able to do that. And the CAPC, if money is pulled away, I mean, more than, right now, the CAPC directs roughly 110,000, I think, every year into the auditorium. And if that was to double or triple, that would pull away from hard advertising in the town, which could generate, which could turn into less revenue for the CAPC, less revenue for the town. So, you know, that is what, you know, personally, I see what you're trying to say is to get the CAPC to do that, and I cannot responsibly endorse that in itself. Not that we won't be still involved with the auditorium, because we will be. I mean, we live here. We're part of it. You know, I go to shows there all the time, all the time. You know, it's, the auditorium is a great feature to the city of Eureka Springs, but it's also a big burden.
I have just a few comments. I think I understand exactly where Mr. Mitchell's coming from. I've heard a lot of the same comments. And it, sometimes I think that I may have made a mistake by including the auditorium in with this tax deal because of all the negative things. And I think the problems are what I'm hearing, and it's no secret, most of the people feel that the CAPC should be paying for the auditorium. And we've had this argument for years and years. I think the CAPC's function, and we don't need to get into the argument of what the function is, I think what it's doing right now, as witnessed this year, is doing a great job of bringing people into town and advertising. We've had a great year, and as witnessed, our sales tax and CAPC tax. The problems we've had is, we've got a large building over there that requires a lot of care, and it's over and beyond the ability of the CAPC to do it. And the only thing that we have felt, and this is the second, we've had two studies on what and how to handle this, and it keeps coming back to an auditorium commission with a steady revenue stream that can help support the maintenance, operations, and viability of that building over there. I also challenge the CAPC to come up with a five, 10-year plan, to see how they're going to help supplement and encourage, in whatever method. You know, I don't know that to help the auditorium commission, if the auditorium, if this tax passes, and we're able to establish a commission. The only viable way a commission works, as James had mentioned, volunteers can only do so much, and without a revenue stream, it's frustrating, and the volunteers fail because there's no money available for them to do anything. So again, that's the reason that we had committed a portion of this tax into the auditorium. Whether that's good or not remains to be seen. But it's the only viable way that I could see that we could afford to keep the auditorium going and operating. We have, we spent a half a million dollars on, we got a grant 10 years ago for Save Americas Foundation. We put a half a million dollars in there. Maybe we didn't spend that all wisely, but we put money into it, and we brought it up to the standards that it is today. But it still needs work. We have mortar and bricks and mortar repair that probably exceed over $100,000. We have a study that's probably, actually, about $300,000 in maintenance. The money from this tax can go into matching grants. If we got a, and we applied for an $80,000 grant this year for the auditorium, for tuck pointing the back portion of the auditorium, not the whole thing, just the back portion, where the fly is. If we would have received that grant, we would have had to refuse it because we couldn't match the $30,000 that would take to match it. And that's what this grant would go for, are items like that. So again, I would encourage the CAPC to help us come up with a plan that we can convince and show the city and the environments and all the people around here how we're all pulling together to put the best use of this tax money into a great building that we have.
James?
I'll just, you're done. I'll just end on this one note. I get a lot of input from the community too, and it's contrary to what's been discussed at this table, and it's about the underutilization of the auditorium. That people want to see more shows, they want to see more events in the auditorium. And yes, I'd like to see more shows and more events, but that puts the CAPC in the delicate position of being a promoter. And anybody that's been in the promotion business understands that you have the ability to lose a lot of money in a hurry promoting musical acts. But there's been discussion with members of the CAPC for next year's projects with hopes that the revenue stream will come through. We've put on hold buying a new projector for the auditorium in lieu of this tax issue coming up. We've had lengthy discussions about turning the auditorium into our movie theater for the city as a revenue stream for the auditorium. The possibility exists that we could lower the rates for local plays and schools and other things too. But all of these things, to maintain that building and to provide the entertainment that a lot of people in this community wants, takes money, it takes manpower, and all of those things come at a cost. And that's why we're hoping that this tax will go through, because it could be a new start for the auditorium and have a regular series of shows in there, because it does provide some, the experience, when people come to the community, if they have the ability to see shows like this past weekend, the Dave Brubrick sons, a stellar performance by everybody that went there. Those are the type of things that we want more of. Unfortunately, they all come with a price tag, and that's why we're looking for this 1 percent tax to aid us in the future.
All right. Okay.
Does that request need a motion, or is that just an open request to them?
Just open request, I think. I mean, hopefully, James said that they're going to take it to there, so.
You can watch the media and make sure I do that.
I do. I'll pass.
Okay. Let's go on. Unfinished business. Ordinance number 2246, finally.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Second. All right, James seconded it.
You've suspended rules and placed ordinance 2246 on its third reading by title only?
Second.
You got a top rule? You got urgency calls on it?
No, no, he doesn't need it.
Ordinance number 2246, an ordinance vacating a portion of Hickory Street, exchanging a portion thereof for certain real property of the adjoining landowner. I made a mistake. I didn't do the roll call. Will you back up? You suspended the rules?
Yes.
Okay, roll call. Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Six zero. Okay, now, ordinance number 2246, an ordinance vacating a portion of Hickory Street, exchanging a portion thereof for certain real property of the adjoining landowner.
All right, James?
I have to approve ordinance number 2246 on its third reading.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Six zero.
All right, great. Mr. Gurkin will be happy over this one. All right, agenda setting. Anybody have anything?
David?
Yes, I'd like to have an update from the CAPC on their plan for the auditorium post-discussion.
Okay.
Second.
With all due respects, I really don't know that we can get it to you at the next meeting.
Well.
ASAP, how's that?
Do the best you can. All right, any other items? Anybody?
I would like to discuss the...
Our vacation.
Yeah, the vacation.
I think that's already on there.
Okay.
Yep, so we made that motion when we did it.
We tabled it.
All right. No further items at this point. City Council comments.
Bob?
No comment.
Mr. McClung?
I want to thank Ron Sumner for putting the Jazz Week in together Friday night at the park, Saturday afternoon. I didn't attend the Crescent deal Thursday evening. I hope it turned, it rained like the sun gun for a while. I don't know how it, I hope it come off all right. I hadn't heard, but. And then, of course, the program at the auditorium Saturday night, which was top-shelf. It was just, it was really superb, as it is every year, and it was, I enjoyed the heck out of it. It's a great day. And that's all I have.
James?
No comment.
David?
I'm surprised y'all, no comment.
Mickey?
Can you zoom in? This is what's left of the famous bumper sticker car. All donations are greatly appreciated. I don't care. I need bumper stickers. Good ones, appropriate ones, please and thank you. I'm going to miss it. That's it. No comment.
All right. I want to thank everybody too for this weekend, for the Blues, for the Jazz Fest. I heard some great things. I was out of town and wasn't able to make the auditorium, but I heard some great music, and I'm disappointed I wasn't able to make it. Upcoming events, 9 through the 17th, the Ninth Annual Scootin' in the Ozarks. Scooter enthusiasts will be enjoying everything you've got to do, so be careful when you're out driving around for those little scooters. 9:21 to 9:25, we'll have the big scooters, the bikes, blues, and barbecues. The big bikes will be in town for five days at least, coming over from Fayetteville and everywhere else, so be prepared. We'll be having an influx of two-wheelers. James?
Do you have the Foghat concert on?
I do.
Just double check.
Yep. 9:24, Foghat concert, the auditorium, 8:00 p.m. Tickets are available at www.odd.org. Anybody else have any events that I'm missing? If not, thank y'all, and motion to adjourn.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all.